There's an election.
There's an election going on, yeah.
Oh, it's 4:30. I don't have my cellphone. Okay, that's everyone. Good afternoon. We call to our study meeting, West Valley City Council. We note that we do have a quorum present, both here in person and electronically. We excuse Councilman Jake Fittisimmanu, who may join us based upon some electronic issues. Okay, so let's see then from our last meeting, we have our minutes of July 27th. So if our minutes are okay, we need a motion to approve them.
Move to approve the minutes. A second.
Motion and a second. Because we are half electronic, half in person, I'll continue with, without objection, the minutes will be approved. Hearing no objection. That was unanimous. Let's see, our regular meeting for tonight. I didn't check, but we don't have any changes, do we?
No, sir.
Okay. Any final questions or comments? Okay. Then we go to our public hearing scheduled for next week. This is application S-2-2021 filed by Sean Johnson. Final plat approval for property at 6840 West, 4100 South. When we consider that next week, it will be under ordinance 21-50. With that, who's doing the, oh. That's one thing I didn't bring is my distant glasses. So Steve, it looks like you're going to present on this.
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Steve Lehman will do that.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve Lehman with the Community Development Department. This is, as you mentioned, a request from Sean Johnson, who is the developer of the Weston Fields subdivision. And I appreciate Eric Bunderson pulling up these illustrations for me. This property will look somewhat familiar to the council. A number of months ago, you did a rezon here for a portion of this property, as well as property to the west. That will be known as Phase Two. And we'll bring that back to you in a month or so. So hopefully be able to get that illustration up. But this property is located at 6840 West and 4100 South. The subdivision consists of 20 lots on 6.4 acres of property. The reason that this is a public hearing is that we are also amending certain lots in the Brookfield subdivision, which sits to the east of the Weston Field subdivision. The reason that they are being amended is that those homes have been there for so many years. Their fences encroach the developers' property. Rather than remove the fences and have that issue to work out, the developers just allowing them to keep their fences where they are. So we're including those lots in this subdivision. That will allow them to remain. Access to the subdivision will be gained off of 4100 South. And hopefully we'll get some photos for you, just to orient you. The subdivision right now is just 20 lots. There will be an additional 38 lots that will be plating in Phase Two, which goes to the planning commission tomorrow, actually. So I think we've got this set up for you. So this is the subdivision. We did, so this is vacant land. It's right next to the railroad to the south. The piece that we're talking about is just west of the church that you see there in the illustration. The east half of that L-shaped leg will be part of Phase Two. And the reason for that is we could only plat 20 lots with only having a single point of access. So the next slide shows the property location. This is looking to the northwest across the field. This is North Grumman property. The next slide is looking back to the southeast. You're familiar with the large water tank there. The next slide is looking straight south. You can see the real way in the distance there. The next slide is looking along 4100 South. At the present time, 4100 South on the south side does not have public improvements. As part of this application, the developer will be dedicating an additional 33 feet of ride away and will also be installing curb gutter sidewalk and a masonry wall. The last slide, a photo that we have, is just the wall that Ivory Homes built on the north side of 4100 South. We only took this picture just to show you the streetscape will be very similar to this, although the wall selection that we are recommending on the south side of 4100 South matches the wall that the city did on its 4100 South project. So the wall will be a little bit different, but very similar. And then the last slide we have for you is the actual subdivision plat itself. So you can see 4100 South is at the top of this. You can see the lots kind of bump out on the east leg of the main road. Those are the lots in the Brookfield subdivision that we are amending. Appreciate Eric and his help with this. So that is our staff report. We're willing to entertain any questions.
Counsel.
So Steve, other than those two lots that need to be included, this would just be an administrative proceeding, is that right?
Yes.
It's been rezoned and they're not asking for anything special?
No, in fact, this property is already zoned R18. When they did the rezoning for Phase Two, they did come in and request some slight additions or modifications to two or three of the lots here due to their depth. So the council did authorize a reduced setback for those.
Right. But that's already been voted on. This is just administrative other than those two lots that need to be accounted for?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Hearing, no further comments. Steve, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to Resolution 21-42. The issuance and sale of road revenue bonds.
So Mayor, just from an introductory standpoint, we've already discussed before what these funds would be used for, what their sources is. But we're pleased to have Laura with us tonight, our financial advisor. And she's gonna stand before you and sort of describe the process as we've been through it before, both so that we're refreshed as a staff and a council and also the citizenry. And anybody else who's interested will hear how that goes as well. So Laura, welcome. Nice to have you here.
Thank you. Frankly, trying to pull up the documents. It's been one of those days.
I have the, I have the parameters resolution and the preliminary official statement here on my laptop. If you want to, you need it?
Mine's thinking about it. There we go. Drum roll.
Oh, and Jim says he's got a hard copy if you'd rather have that.
I'm to 100. Maybe Jim ought to run it up. It's still thinking. There we go. Naturally, right? That's the way it goes. The way it always goes. All right. Thank you. Thanks. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Wayne, I apologize for that little bit behind. I was hoping your previous presentation would go on. Just looks like, come on, stretch it out. But thank you. It's good to be here with you this afternoon. And the city's very fortunate, the Utah State Legislature. And I'm sure it didn't just magically happen. I'm sure that you had some people, you know, working behind the scenes from your staff to get the legislature to appropriate money to West Valley. Other cities in Salt Lake County were also recipients of appropriations by the state of Utah to use toward financing roads. So the legislation, I think it's House Bill 64 is what it was under, provides for one payment this year and then 15 subsequent payments. And as you all know, construction costs are going up rapidly. The city has a lot of needs for road improvements, as do most cities. It's just hard for the, you know, revenue sources available to you to keep up with that demand on our roadways. So the concept that we have, that we'll be utilizing with this bond is to capture those, that future stream of revenues from the state. It's a set stated payment every year. And we will bond against that. And if you say, well, that seems a little bit odd, you know, and quite frankly, West Valley has done something like this several years ago with the Maverick Center. We had part of that financing. You had an agreement from the U.S. Olympic Committee to pay $7 million at some point in the future. But golly gee, you needed to build the arena today, right? So we monetized that and brought it forward and used that note with the Olympic Committee as a security for that transaction. So this is similar to that. We're, you know, saying to the bondholders that we'll use the stream of revenues that we get from the state to make these, to make these bonds. In order to most fully leverage those monies, what we have included in the parameters resolution will be a separate resolution that the city would need to act on to have what's called a moral obligation behind that. And the closest thing that I can think of to compare, like in the, you know, consumer debt world, would be like being a cosigner. It's not quite because, you know, if you don't fund that because of your moral obligation, your credit doesn't get dinged, quite frankly. It's not, it's an annual, you know, an annual thing that you would look at. What you would be required to do is if the state doesn't pay you or doesn't pay you on time, because that's the revenues that the bondholders will be looking at. The city would say, if you agree to this moral obligation pledge, the city would say, you know, we, you know, if you're of the mindset of you would intend to make that payment anyway while you go, you know, work with the state, if you're the mindset to say, we would make that payment anyway, then it makes sense to put the moral obligation behind it. What you would be required to do is to agree to carry that amount in your budget. So, you know, Jim, not that he would ever do this, but he can't get cute and go, oh, I'm just, we're just gonna put that aside. And so we have a missed bond payment the state didn't pay us. So the requirement would be to proactively put it in your budget so that you see that, you know, the payment needs to be made. And if you choose to take it out, you choose to take it out. This is not a, you know, they can't hold a gun to your head. But if we have that moral obligation, because that does carry some weight with the lenders, then we can leverage 100 cents on the dollar to your funds. So it would allow us to maximize that stream of revenues with a likelihood being very, very low. The state is not going to appropriate to you, right? So if we don't do that, the other alternative would be to say to the bondholders, okay, we will put some type of debt service coverage in that structure of, let's say, one and a quarter. And that would mean we would be able to borrow less. You would still get that same amount every year from the state and you'd be able to use that in little increments at a time to, you know, work on those roads. But you wouldn't have as much corpus upfront. So to me, again, I think there's very low risk that the state won't appropriate. I think that, given that, and, you know, the likelihood that it would seem to me that you historically wanted to make those debt payments, that you would consider that moral obligation in order to fully leverage, to fully leverage that. So that is probably the thing that requires the most discussion. If there are any questions related to that, then I'll walk you through the, you know, the parameters in the parameters resolution that you'll be asked to consider next week.
I have a question, but it's probably a Wayne question.
Okay.
So we budget for this payment that we don't have to make because the state makes it. So then when we haven't spent that money, does it go into our fund balance or what happens with those funds?
That's actually a better question for Jim, for the mechanics of that. So I'll turn that to him.
Certainly. Jim Walsh, Finance Director, can you, are you okay?
I can. I'm right here.
Okay. So as I understand the question, it was when we get the appropriation from the state to make that payment, what happens to, if you wouldn't mind rephrasing that for me?
So we have to budget this payment. And then we don't make the payment because the state gives us money to make the payment or makes the payment. So then what happens with our budget line? The million one or whatever it is? Do we slide that over into fund balance? Or we have a plan for that or what happens?
Okay. So actually, what happens is the state does not make this payment directly. They pay us and then we make the debt service. So when we put it in our budget, we actually show revenue from the state and we show an expense from our debt service. It's our debt, but the source of funds is going to come into the city from the state. So we'll always get it that way.
Okay. So we don't, we don't, we show it on the books, but we need to get the money from the state to make the payment.
That is correct. Similar to a sales tax bond. We collect sales tax. We use the sales tax to pay the debt service.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Excellent question. Any other questions on that point? All right. So with that, the parameters resolution, I think all of you have been to this rodeo before relative to parameters resolutions. It will establish, if you choose to adopt it next week, it establishes a maximum par amount of the bond, which is 15 and a half million. A maximum term to maturity, which is 16 years. And if you were paying attention before, you go, well, we're only getting 15 years of payments. Yes, but we have to be careful that we don't. We said 15 years and one of those went 15 years on one day. We just shot ourselves in the head relative to how long we can bond for. So we just add an extra year so that we can catch the timing. We don't, we don't end up missing, missing that last payment and being able to monetize that. The maximum interest rate is 5.5% and I expect it will be significantly below that. And the maximum discount on the bonds would be 3% or sold at 97 cents on the dollar. The market is such that it is a very hot market in terms of being an issuer. Interest rates are very, very low. I looked at some yields yesterday on the MMD. And since April 8th, I had a reason I was looking for these specific dates. But since April 8th and about a week ago, interest rates have come down even further. And I would expect that we will get these bonds done at below 2%. I would be stunned if we don't. Granted, interest rates move, but it is a really good time to do that. Interestingly, I did an analysis for another city in Utah not too long ago relative to should they issue bonds today or do pay as you go? And theirs specifically is a water and sewer project. And so I said, well, I can tell you what the finance costs and interest costs will be. You, your engineers will have to tell me what you think the, you know, your cost of inflation will be if you wait and do this project over a period of years. And using their data, I put together a model and that model had a sensitivity to it. And it was crystal clear that it made sense at these low rates compared to, you know, the cost of inflation to bond upfront, get that, get those improvements in and pay for them with lower cost money that, rather than with a higher cost inflationary dollars. So with that, no one has hit the table yet as I blather on about interest rates. Are there any questions about the parameters resolution? All right. Anything else?
I have some questions, just not about that.
Okay, okay.
So when is our expected issue of these bonds?
We estimate that we can be in the market. We have to have a 30-day contestability period run from the time you adopt the parameters resolution. The parameters resolution will appoint officials within the city that can finalize everything as long as we stay within those parameters. So I would expect that we will be pricing. We've already selected an underwriter. I expect we'll be pricing right around the date that that contestability period ends. So that would be, you know, first part, last part of September, first part of October, and close probably a week after that.
And then Wayne, I suppose there are restrictions on what this money can be used for, right? Similar to classy road spends or something like that?
Yes. So transportation, road construction projects generally. I mean, we'll have some leeway within that, but can't be spent for other things than that.
And so I'm guessing that there's a list being created of projects to do and we'll be seeing those come through?
Yes.
Now, we actually didn't start this process until we, we had an idea of where the funds were going to be spent and could they be spent fast enough? Because once you borrow the monies on a tax exempt basis, they have to be spent within a three-year period. You have to have a reasonable expectation to spend them within three years.
Yeah, well, I'll be looking forward to seeing that then.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see. Next, we have Resolution 21-143, Contract to Entelen Construction for the Grasmer Park Project.
Hey, Jason, I believe is going to describe for you the project we've got coming up here.
Jason Erickson, Parks and Recreation Department. Yes, Mayor, so this is for awarding the contract to Entelen Construction for the, for the construction of Grasmer Park, which is a one-acre park located over at 3876 South Grasmer Lane, which is approximately 1470 West. So it's a little bit south and west of Kingsport Park. We solicited bids and had five responders. The lowest responsible bidder was, was Entelen. And for 535,128, the, all these funds will be coming out of CDBG monies. So we do have grant monies to pay for that. And we would recommend approving it, but it's up to you guys. Any questions?
What kind of experience do we have with this contract?
With Entelen? So they are the ones that built both of the Public Works and the Park Shops. But as far as building, building parks for us, they have not, they have not built one for us.
Do we have a timeline?
They will begin construction as soon as they can after the, after approval next week. They have like 10 days to get all their legal documents in order and then, and then they'll start construction after that. We're hoping as close to the 17th as, as we possibly can.
And for completion?
It's a 90-day contract, so we're hoping to have it done this year. Now, it all depends on whether, as to whether or not we're able to get sawed on, sawed on the ground or not, but in some of those areas. But most of it, they should be able to get in.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Looks like that's all the question comments, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Resolution 21-144 for the purchase of garbage cans from Waste Quit.
Good afternoon. Dan Johnson, Public Works Department. We are requesting authorization from the council to purchase a lot of garbage cans, roughly 1,900 cans, which is normally, it's more than we normally would purchase. So as you recall, the, the city owns and maintains all the containers for the solid waste collection for a residential curb pickup program. And they break and we get new customers and second can requests. And so we're constantly ordering new cans. And so this is just a resolution to purchase roughly 1,900 cans for about $112,000. And we're, the prices on garbage cans are going up. And so we're making a bigger order right now in anticipation of future increases as we've been told by the people we buy them from. And then, and also we're paying quite a bit more for shipping. So we're trying to optimize and maximize the amount that we pay to get these cans here. And so if there are any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
On the issue paper, it says that we're buying more than usual, that we would buy these throughout the year.
Yeah.
What would have been the normal timeframe to buy 1,900 cans?
I think we would buy them quarterly roughly. And really, that's mostly due to storage, just having space to store them.
That was my next question. Will we roll these all out at once? Should we have sufficient storage for them?
We're just gonna find some, we're gonna rearrange things in the yard to store them and, and make it work out there.
And we wouldn't need then to buy new cans for maybe how long?
I think this is, this ends up being more like a twice-a-year thing with this volume.
This is double what we would have normally done?
Yeah.
What do we do with the old cans? Throw them away?
Well, we fix them to the extent that we can and then, yeah, that's a great question. I think.
Kind of ironic, isn't it?
Yeah, we, we put them in a dumpster and haul them off.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Yeah. You guys dealing with one company or you, you know, the information and asking a bit and sending to you guys?
See, broke up a little bit. I think I got the gist, like, do we purchase from one company? I think I heard that. Your connection was a little bit poor.
So is this, you purchase this from, either from one company or you have to send out the information to multiple companies?
So the purchase, so we're purchasing the cans. The can, the manufacturer, the can that, that our folks like to buy from is Toder. And it's because of the way that these cans are produced. And so we actually purchased them through a nationwide purchasing co-op where they go out and find bids, very current bids from other local government entities who purchase cans. And we're able to comply with procurement laws through the purchasing, through this, this national co-op. So, which is called Omnia Partners. That's the purchasing group that we've purchased from. So to answer your question, I think we have purchased from a couple of different can vendors before, but our preference is to purchase from Toder because of the nature of the can. We think these things last longer and they have the numbers that are actually welded, like melted into the, into the can and they don't scrape off, which is a problem that we have to deal with from time to time.
Or national, or is this a third party here?
Then, again, your connection's not great, but the national firm is, is a third party.
Is a third party?
Yeah. Yes. So we, we use this third party to get the pricing, to get current bids from other local government entities who are purchasing the same product.
And that we have to go through or we don't have to go through them?
Well, without this, with, without this third party, we would need to go out and solicit our own bids and issue an RFP and go through a solicitation process. By using this Omnia Partners, we're able to purchase exactly what we want with current competitive bids.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hearing, no further comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see. Next, we have Resolution 21-145, An Interlocal Agreement with the County for Maintenance Services on 7200 West. for maintenance services on 7200 West. And take it away.
If any of you have driven out on 7200 West between 3500 South and Parkway Boulevard lately, you'll notice that this is halfway done. And so we got a little bit behind on things and, or at least on communication with the county and the council. And so Magna Metro Township contracted with Salt Lake County to chip seal the shared road that we have 7200 West is our, that's our western boundary in that area. And we agree that's a good maintenance technique right now on that road. And so we're recommending that the council execute the, or authorize the execution of this interlocal agreement to put a chip seal on 7200 West between 3500 South and Parkway Boulevard that is just a pavement preservation technique. Last week, the county went out and sprayed down, sprayed the oil, dropped the, the rocks, the little chips on it and put up the 15 mile per hour signs that everybody ignores. While the, the chips are kind of loose, they'll sweep them up, put a fog seal and then re-stripe the road and it'll be black and ready for service. So are there any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we don't approve, we have to scrape them all off?
Yep. Okay, next we have our consent agenda. There are six items. This is an interesting one because we need to have a little discussion. There are two items on here, one for $216,000 for Resolution 149, 21 dash 149. Generally speaking, that seems like that would probably not make it a consent type of item, a routine item, but certainly I would defer to the council. The other one was 147, that one's for $28,000. Typically, most of these that we run through are a few thousand dollars or a few hundred dollars even and are pretty similar in scope. I don't know how, if you have any comments on that? We're just, it just, only because of my background, we, before, in my previous job, didn't allow large items to go on the consent agenda. But any comments?
Payment to us.
Yeah.
So I'm more comfortable with that.
But it, but it is 28,000.
Yes, it is large.
I guess really the question becomes, should we have a dollar limit on what goes on the consent agenda?
You know, my feeling is if they're the same type of activity all the time, which all of these are, they're all the same type of activity as anything else we've had on the consent agenda. ICO multifamily holdings may have a little bit more because they got more property. And I think that's what adds the amount in is just the, the amount of property that we're dealing with rather than what it is.
Right, if it was 20 lots, it would be different. We'd just be doing 20 resolutions.
20 resolutions instead of one. So I don't see, I don't see a problem with it.
One of the things, the reason that I brought it up to is that appearance has a lot to do. In other words, anyone looking at our agenda and they say, you're putting a consent item in there for $200,000, that, they say, why are you doing that? They are not familiar with the routine of our going through that.
And then when they ask, we can answer.
Well, we can handle these next week since these, I mean, these six are here, we could deal with them in our meeting, not approving them all at once perhaps and discussing.
Well, that would certainly be one way of approaching it. I would certainly encourage that if you didn't pull them off of the consent agenda.
And I think that's how I would prefer to handle it, just take those out and deal with them separately and say, you know, this is a little bit unusual because of the amount and maybe discuss it for a moment.
Okay.
But it would, you know, I'm, I'm more in agreement with Don. It's a matter of scope, right? If we did something, somewhere else, some huge property owner, it would be another large amount and yet we're just doing the same thing.
Well, the scope, of course, as identified by the council, the scope as identified by the public might be different.
Well, I understand your point, your sensitivity to that. It's pretty, you know, it could be like $5 million and I was just like pass it in with the $500.
Any cash.
Well, and I guess the question of routine is an interesting one because actually our overall budget is fairly routine most every year. It really is. The city budget doesn't change a whole lot. You know, you may add a little bit of equipment or a new employee, but most of it is exactly the same. So anyway, I just wanted to highlight that for you. There are three other consent items there, or excuse me, two other for Hawkeye that's, who seem to be routine and two others on the 4700 South project.
By the way, what the cap we have right now, currently we have right now, is it 20,000 per piece?
He's asking what the cap is to be on the consent agenda, what the.
Is there a cap, Nicole? Yeah, I mean, I know Nicole's on top of this for sure. So she knows which items are going to be classified according to which section on the agenda, so I have complete comfort in that. As far as the why they're in any particular classification, Don is correct as to the rationale behind why it's there. So we get that, it's this type of project as opposed to being classified by the dollar amount. Having said that, that's all up to you guys, however you want to do that and your preference is fine with us from a staff standpoint. So did you hear that, Tom? To answer your question, there is no cap?
All right, I know that.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Hey, I prefer not to have a cap because other boards I've sat on, I've seen where there's a cap for this type of item and so they'll give us two items so they'll stay under the cap, but it's the same, same thing, same project.
Well, certainly the difference in this one is the ICO project is a big property and, and therefore it's got a lot of space, as was mentioned, and frontage. And so therefore that dollar amount or the scope of that project is bigger. It is always easy to, to pick those out and have further discussion as well if that's the council's.
Which I think should be our practice is.
Yep.
Notice and discuss and see if we want to do anything different with them.
Well, certainly the issue, when you come down to it, is visibility. And if the council is comfortable pulling those out separately or at least talking about them separately in our meeting, I think that would meet that visibility rule. The, the concern I have is because a lot of times we just approve the consent agenda with just a couple of comments. I don't want the public to think we're trying to sneak anything through.
So as far as our regular meeting agenda for next week, can we just pull those out and put them up above the consent?
For next week?
Mm-hmm. Or does it need to be somehow?
Okay, yeah, we can do that and just make them regular resolutions.
Yeah, it's just, it's just where they appear on the agenda.
Sure, I was unsure because since we put them this week, the study meeting isn't any issue. Nicole's the expert.
Right, but it's a matter of remembering a whole week. So, I mean, I, I think that they should start here, but then in our study meeting, if we can just bump them up so that we remember to maybe address them separately, that's the process procedure I would have proposed.
Yeah, I don't think there's any reason to delay them or anything like that. It's just a matter of visibility.
So it's 47 and 49?
That would really mess up our numbering system next week.
Ah, that's okay.
You know, you'll have to look at it to see what number.
Have to read it anyway.
No, 147, 149. So you look at the others and as is typical, $400 and. Okay. Do you need any further information on any of the items there? Okay. We got through that one pretty easy. And unfinished business coming back on our agenda, application GPZ dash 9 2021, Russell Platt, general plan change, zone change, development agreement. This is the one that, you know, as you were aware, they asked for it to be held and we're now bringing it back for, we have talked about this before, but do you want another presentation on it? There were a few changes.
Yeah, there are a couple of changes that the council may want to hear, Mayor.
Yeah, okay, let's do that then.
And Steve, before you begin, this went all the way back to the planning commission and went through again, is that right?
It did not.
Okay, so we had it all the way to our regular meeting. The developer wanted to pull it, make some changes. So yeah, I would be interested in knowing what's different because I was ready to go forward that night.
So I'm going to share my screen here. So just a quick refresher. Again, the property here is on Redwood Road. It totals 1.8 acres. I'll just go through these quickly. So these first few slides are the same. You can see it's on, on two sides, you have an existing town home development called Red Oaks. And then just some pictures, again, we've seen these before, so I'll go through these quickly. So this is the updated concept plan. Now, this won't actually be in the, the development agreement, but the main thing here was that the, the previous concept plan didn't take into account some of the setback considerations the planning commission was concerned about. Because you do have two story product on the south and east sides, this accounts for the setbacks that they would need to maintain between those neighboring uses. And the main thing as far as the development agreement is concerned would be the elevations and renderings. So that the text of the, the development agreement is the same, so nothing's changed. They really were modifying the elevations and renderings to, so that they complied with the text. So this just shows floor plans, so there's again, three different styles of town homes, same as before in terms of the number of units. These are all units that have two car garages. The first two types are three stories. The third type is a combination of two and three stories. This would be the second type. And then this is the, the third type where, again, you have the, the ground level being the bottom right, then the top, top right is the second floor and then the one on the left would be the third floor where you can see just a portion of that has a third floor and then you have the roof deck over the, the second floor for a portion of the building. So this is a rendering, so this would be the units A and B, which are alternating in this building. So again, three stories with the, that fourth story area is just the stairway leading to the roof deck. This next image is then just the, the colored elevation of that same product. So these are, again, the units A and B. And then the, this would be the unit C, which is more on the concept plan, more to the southeast portion of the property. So really, again, in terms of changes, it's just the elevations and the, the rendering that was updated.
I haven't heard any comments or questions, so this does seem that it appeals to a different segment of the market with the three bedroom, three bath, three and a half baths for some of them. So that seems like that's a little bit different market than the traditional one. Of course, the market is changing.
So I have a question for Steve.
Yes.
Okay, so on the issue paper, it says the units are going to be between 2,059 square feet to 2,934. But then in the development agreement, it's totally different numbers. It starts out with 17 something and does never get to 2,400 square feet. So is that just the difference in the two different people that were going to build it?
Right, so the, the original proposal is reflected in the development agreement that has the 1,700 square feet and change. These latest drawings that have been submitted by the, the new architect actually start at 2,000. So what, what was committed to originally was the 17 and change, but these latest drawings actually start at 2,000. So we could amend, if the council wanted, we could amend the development agreement. I mean, this still complies with the square footage, it's just larger than what they had shown originally.
Well, and I would prefer the 2,000 and the 2,500 square foot units. And just to make sure that we're not bait and switch, I would prefer to update the development agreement in case these guys sell it off, we get what we're actually being told, this 2,000 and the 2,500 instead of the 17.
I agree, if they've committed to build this, that ought to be part of our agreement. So can we have that amended before next week or do we need to amend it in our meeting next week?
We can, we can make that change before next week.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
I have one more question, sorry.
Go ahead.
So Steve, what is the parking percentage? I saw that they're going to have seven visitor stalls and 18 of the units will have deep enough driveways that they can park two cars in the driveway, but do you know what the percentage is?
So they, in this case, this latest concept that they have, 20 of the units have driveways that are deep enough to park in. So they're, so they have, here again, under the latest concept, they have more driveways than what was in the development agreement, again, based on an earlier concept. And I believe there's a few more visitor stalls that they were able to fit as well.
So can we change everything that was amended in the planning commission and what they've committed to into this new development agreement? So we don't have the two different standards?
Yes, yes, if, if we wanted to.
Okay.
Increase those numbers, we can, we can make that change.
I just think it would be helpful to have it exactly what they've committed to so that we're understanding next week and there's no confusion.
Yes, we, we can make that change.
Okay. Let's see, that takes care of unfinished business. Then we have communications, healthy West Valley follow-up discussion. Don, you have a comment here because you've been working a little bit.
I did meet with the Healthy West Valley Committee this afternoon and mentioned to them that we were going to discuss this tonight because Jake would finally be here and he wasn't here. So I don't know, several said they would be here. So I don't know, several said they would be here. I don't see him.
Maybe he'll be at the next meeting.
Yeah, or they're watching on YouTube, because we invited them to to watch on YouTube also. I, I would say that, you know, Jake is deeply involved in this, and I think we need to have him in on the discussion.
Maybe we could ask that Nicole work that out with Jake and find out for sure.
He was intending to be here tonight, just for knowledge. He was concerned that he was going to have a signal issue wherever he was at, so maybe that's what happened. So, so his issue this time is technically related as a, as opposed to intent or commitment, I guess is the way to put that. Not a very good way to put it, but he was planning on being here.
Okay. But it, you know, we did have a present, I can do that in my council report, though. Talked a little bit about the presentation they had today at the Healthy West Valley Committee.
I don't know if you want to do it now, if it's about that. Is it related to this committee?
Yeah.
Why not just do it now?
Okay. I'm fine.
Yeah, it's on our agenda. We can keep it on the agenda.
Part of what they discussed was the find the right name, Communities that Care program, which kind of takes these community-based committees and coalitions and kind of gives them a framework to work through, which is a national program. But most of the members of the committee were, you know, a little more saying, you know, we're doing that already. Let's just keep going and get the committee organized and can get things organized. The main thing with the Communities that Care is there's some funding behind it from the federal and the state governments. They're not federal government, state governments and the federal National Committee. It's basically risk and preventative factors. And they talked a little bit about, we're not really raising youth in our community. We're raising adults for the next generation. But if we can intervene with them as youth, then we can get better adults for that next generation. So that's, they talked about one coalition that's finding, that's going up in Kearns and how good it was that it's going. And I mentioned to him that for four to six years before I retired, we were working on that coalition. And it's been twelve years since I retired, so it's only taken them eighteen years to get it going.
They're raising adults for the next generation.
Now they're raising the adults for the next generation, right? So, you know, I think the the committee itself, the members of it right now, want to get it going, want to keep it going right now. Will look at something like Communities that Care and work with their organization a little bit, adapt some things, and, you know, plagiarize as much as we can and, and make it work for our community rather than just a general community nationwide. So that was the essence of the meeting today. Most of it was the presentation from the Communities that Care. But the discussion got going so well that our moderator suddenly said, oh, we're ten minutes overtime. So, so it is an active group that wants to do something and get it going, so.
Well, you know, as I've listened to this and pondered it, you know, and looked back at some of the other committees, the only concern would be if we do it, you know, if this city does some assistance with it, as long as a council member is kind of spearheading it and the rest of the council agrees with it and you have volunteers to work it, my question is, why not?
Yeah, and as long as it's sustainable.
Yeah, and I guess the other thing is, it also has to have something to do with the city. In other words, it does have to have a direct relationship.
Okay. So. And those committee members that are on it, many of them are groups, you know, IHC, IMC, things like that, that are interested in the healthy West Valley. But most of them have a tie, all of them have a tie to West Valley also. So it's not just a group coming in. In fact, they mentioned the group, the, the thing we had from the University of Utah back in two thousand nine. It was more of the University of Utah coming down and telling us, this is what we need to do to have, make our community healthy, rather than the community saying, this is what we need to do. Now we need to find funding and support. And I was on that committee too, and it, that's the way it was. The university kind of told us, this is what we found out about you. Now, this is how you're going to fix it. It didn't fly. In fact, I don't think it even got off the runway.
Well, I've, I've heard positive support for it. I've not heard any negative
No.
comments or concerns.
Those who are going to be here tonight were going to be in support of the committee aspect in that, so.
So, and because we've been talking about it, and there's been plenty of time for any of that to come up, I'm wondering if we ought to have staff do some preliminary prep work on this. Because my estimation is, if I'm incorrect, my estimation is that we're going to form this committee.
I think we will.
And the question, the only question is, what role will the city play?
Yeah.
City, the council member can play a role. Is there any role for, that the staff should play?
We've got staff on the committee right now.
And as long as it's reasonable, then I say, why not do the work and let's get this proposal together?
So all of that would be fine. The only question I would have, and I'll go back and just sort of work this out a little bit in my own mind, is we, when we originally had this discussion, we sort of gave the council, these are the various formats.
What kind of committee?
Which format?
Right, so which format? And after that, it's easy from a logistical setup standpoint.
I think that's what we wanted to discuss, but that's why I kind of wanted Jake here too, so I could.
We're already sort of ad hoc committee status, right?
Yeah.
And the other ones were formal by ordinance or appointed by city manager, right?
Yeah. We're working ad hoc right now. We've got staff support.
So will that work in that format?
I think it will. Seems to be working now, doesn't it, Sam? Your, your department's staff support.
So I don't know, I'm comfortable with it being an ad hoc committee, because that's one of the options.
Well, and we always can formalize that, right?
Right, we can leave it that way, and then if Jake says, or, you know, the committee says, we want to be something bigger.
In fact, maybe that'll give us some time to see what concerns are that would not be addressed in an ad hoc form.
Okay.
And give us some impetus going forward too. Now we've, we're doing something, so is this going to work?
Okay, yep, we're good to go.
I'm good with that.
Okay, anything else on that?
No.
Okay. Then we'll move to our council calendar. Any questions or issues there? Hearing none, we'll go to potential future agenda items.
I have a couple.
Yes.
So the first one is, we're concerned about is the two properties on Redwood Road. I brought, I brought up before. Twenty-eight oh nine sound or fifty-two, Steve Bill had brought up a couple of times about the yard sale on the Redwood Road right there. The, I believe that they stopped because there's only zero point eight five. And then two thousand seventeen, we changed the rule in our city is a half acre. You cannot build a strip mall, I mean, I mean, one acre from half acre to one acre. So they stopped right there. So the zero point eight five, they cannot build a strip mall right now. But at the same time, about three weeks ago, we turned out one of the project on thirty-five, I sell only one acre to build density, the tower houses. And we turned it out because they're small acres. But here, zero point eight five, so we don't want to see that on Redwood Road as the yard sale. And last year, Steve Bill brought it up about, yeah, he saw it multiple times, and I saw it too. And we don't want to see that. And I asked you, the council, you want to do with that? Because if they want to build houses there, and they have a problem with the UDOT, because traffic very fast on Redwood Road, and they don't want any entrance in and out on Redwood Road, that's the problem. Two pieces probably right there, and also it's a twenty-five, thirty-one. Also, I see this on your sale, but it's real rare compared with our two divided tracks. And we don't want to see that in my district personally, and the city don't want to see that too. The council want them to do in our district, in my district.
I caught some of that.
Well, I think that, like any property, we don't look at a property and say, this is what we want to do with it. There are certain things the owner can do with it now, and if the owner wants to change the zoning or come with a proposal, then they need, it needs to be brought by the owner, not by the council. Let's say, here's a property that we don't like, what are we going to do about it?
No, it is, is, is not my things here, my decision here, but the thing is, they stopped for two items right here, two rule right here. The first one in two seventeen, it changed from half acre to one acre for the strip mall. And thus, they cannot do the first strip mall right now because they're only under one acre. The second one is that they cannot do with the tower houses because it's too small compared with the other tower houses, just small piece property. They cannot do that. And another thing is, they cannot build houses because the UDOT, they don't want to have many entrance in and out on Redwood Road. And I just wonder about, I'm not going to, we're not asked, you know, is, I'm not, what are we going to do? Because that going to be, you're going to see what your sale there, what do you want to do, you know?
But Tom, is this your property?
No, it's not my property.
Well, then I think we need to wait for the owner to come forward with some proposal or request.
They, they brought it to me.
Well, they need to bring it to us.
Yeah, I understand, but the thing is, I'm concerned about, that's, I don't want to see that. What I want to ask you guys, what do you have in mind, not to make decisions, but you have in mind for this?
So Tom, are you thinking we need to change the ordinance back, that a strip mall can be on less, or on a half acre or more?
Yeah, I, I think because I brought up to when, I know to the, to you guys last time, when he says he's just going to took that in to consideration about it, because, yeah, I don't know how we come from half acre to one acre. And, and now they, they, they kind of, they upset about it. I mean, they, they could not do anything about that there probably. If we can accept them for that, we don't want to see the yard sale there.
No. So would it be difficult, Mr. Pyle, to ask staff to just remind us why we changed that in a future meeting or a communication item?
Yeah, that's easy. We're always glad to just go back, get the information, kind of re-summarize why the decision was brought and then made. That's not, that's easy, no problem.
Okay, I think that's a good solution to get at least the ball rolling, to know if we are making certain product, projects, just, or properties, non-buildable, so.
Yeah. I just, just brought up to you guys, until you guys know that this is the situation we have here, on Redwood Road, that not only you and me see the yard sale, but people see your sale there, they don't like it at all. But the second item is, I wanted to bring it up again, one more, one more time about the, the loud music. It's not only in Chesterfield, but also I found out last Tuesday with the international night out, and multiple people there, they, they're concerned about the loud music, not the Chesterfield area, but also in the west side, thirty-six eighties west and forty-two sixty-six south in half night out. Group of people, they were concerned, it's the only one street or two street, but the area. And I talked to a few people there, they showed their concern about that. I just wonder, what are we going to do with that? They said, well, we have orders, why are we not enforcing that orders? And last time, remember, the lady from the King Point Park, she came to our microphone and put it here, and she shared that information with us about she worried about that loud music in her, in her park right there, in front of her house, late at night. And I think it's not fair for you and I, we follow the rule and obey the law. And other people, they take advantage of that. It's not fair. And I think I, I bring this one up probably three times already for the last probably eighteen months. This is the third time already.
It was about the noise ordinance?
Yeah, noise ordinance.
Yeah, not, well, sort of about the noise ordinance, but also about the complaints of loud music in the neighborhoods.
Well, it looks like we're going to do a quick review on the first item that he mentioned. Is there anything we need to do on this second one?
You know, PD is aware of the, you know, complaints that come in for loud noise. They respond to them as soon as they can.
Yeah, PD is not ignoring the issue. We're
No.
enforcing as best as we were able to do and proactively. Beyond that, I don't, I don't have any better ideas.
There are some things that are a little bit higher priority call and noise.
Right.
I, I hear is, that's not the point. The point I'm trying to say right here is, is we need to kind of, we're doing right now, basically kind of a band-aid. We need to do something to stop this. For example, like you have a stiff five or big ticket to them, you gave them.
And we're doing that.
Yeah, if you keep the two-one house, they're going to pass information to the next, next house.
We're doing that too. We're moving house to house and ticketing and warning as we speak.
But I, wait, but I don't, I don't know why that's still happening. It's something there, missing something there.
Yeah, what we're missing is, this is a very longstanding and difficult project. You mentioned you've brought it up multiple ti, uh, times, Tom, and that's correct. And we recognize that, but it's not new. This is a, this is a, you know, I hate to use the term, but it's a societal issue.
We're going to stop that.
So do we know what the fine is for playing loud music at night?
Uh, we just researched this. I can't remember what it is, but I'll get the information back again.
Because that's what I remember from last time Tom brought up, is we're going to check and see if we want to change the fine schedule.
Right, which we did. I thought we distributed that fine number. Maybe we didn't. I'll get back and check, recheck that.
And let me just play a devil's advocate. We go out, we fine them, they don't pay the fine.
Then what?
Then what?
Right, yeah.
What recourse do we have to get them to pay the fine or stop the music?
Right, which we certainly would pursue in, in the normal ways we do from a collection standpoint. But you're right, it's a great question, what happens then next? But you're right, it's a great question, what happens then next in a, in a criminal sort of escalation standpoint, for sure. The options are limited after that.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I've got a dog next door that came after my son and it got reported and they gave him until August twenty-second to get rid of one of the three. Or July twenty-second, actually.
Right.
I counted this afternoon, they're all three there, because they were all barking at me at the fence too, because I walked out in my yard. And I know they've got the ticket, they've got the fine. I know they haven't paid it because I know the family.
And to that point, and again to Tom's request, when I say we're out and we're warning and we're ticketing.
We're doing it. We're doing it. It, it's the enforcement of, even after we enforce it, I guess what I'm saying is it's the enforcement of the collection that runs into the problem.
We're looking at different places to find and cite, like for example, what can we do if we see an illegal concert forming beforehand and that sort of thing. We're, we're pursuing that option or that angle as well through COP. So, I, I don't, I can't tell you anymore than we're certainly aware of it and we're doing everything we can do about it.
But, but here, here, what you can see right here is, you see code enforcement, if they don't pay their, their fine or their ticket, what we, with the next step we're gonna do, we increase every day and we take them to court. So what a procedure we have here with the loud noise, with the muses right here.
Yeah, maybe I didn't, maybe I didn't make another connection clear, Tom, and I did not say this, so I'll add that to it. We're going door to door and house to house, we're warning, we're issuing tickets, and we're having success that way. But you're right, they're just moving the events or the issue from property to property. So when they do that, we have to go back and go to the next property and do it all over again, which we're doing. We're not stopping. So we are having some success in terms of any individual property that we go and contact stopping that, but the problem moves along either purposely because they're connected or organized, or not purposely, just because another property has the same problem.
To be, to be honest with you guys, I didn't realize, I thought maybe Chesterfield, so only the place that they, they did that. But I found out lies last Tuesday at the National Night Out. Message you go to your forty-two sixty-six south, thirty-six eight hundred west, at a big map right there and that, that they hold a meeting for National Night Out. And they complaining about that. It's only one, not only one area, it's a big area. So we just sit there and we, we do nothing?
No, we're not doing nothing, Tom. That's exactly the point I'm making.
I know we're doing something here, but seem like it's, it's some reason we're not stopping that, right?
Yeah, because people don't want to stop.
I think we gotta do something.
Societal issue I was talking about.
I think we gotta do something about, because code enforcement, we can escalate. If they don't pay the fine, we can increase the price every day and take them to court.
Well, you know, we're talking about right now this, this noise thing, but the reality is that this is a problem across society. Shoplifters. You know, if they get caught, most of them don't go to jail, they get a fine.
If they don't pay their ticket, they don't get arrested, they don't get put in jail.
Uh, we can't send everyone to jail, you know, and it's, it's not serious enough. Our laws, our ordinances are mainly to keep our honest people honest, but those who are dishonest and don't care, they don't care.
But what if we moved noise ordinance enforcement from the criminal side to the civil side? So it was like weeds or trash car or something. And so we could just, we wouldn't have to interact with them like the police do, knocking on the door. We'd send them a notice that they, and we couldn't really do it like a courtesy notice because we have two weeks to turn down the music or, I mean, that's not gonna work, right? Plus, it's not gonna solve the problem that night because nobody showed up that night. We're not sending our ordinance enforcement officers to the door because they're not armed. But on the criminal side, when somebody doesn't pay a ticket, do we convert it to a judgment? Do we lean the house? Do we try to collect it?
On the criminal side, we try to collect it and you, and you go back and you do, on the civil side, code enforcement, for example, yeah, we can lean the house.
We can obey it. So if we put on the criminal side, such as this is, do we try to collect those judgments, reduce them to judgments?
We do try to collect them and they have varying levels of luck. So it's the same end result, it's just a different process.
So we're, we are doing that.
Yeah.
We're trying to make an impression, get them in trouble, get some money from them, make it hurt for violating the law.
Right.
It's good enough for me.
Yeah, I believe there are some problems that'll never go away.
And, and which is not to excuse and say, therefore, we're not gonna do anything, because we are and we're going out there and we're pursuing as per request and as per notice of complaint. I've had multiple conversations over the last, even just in the last week, both with police and with the code enforcement officers and the COP units as to what exactly we're doing. And I'm satisfied that we're doing everything within our powers now to, to work on that problem. Whether people want to cooperate or not is a whole nother level of, of question.
Laws are great for people that obey laws.
Well, they protect people a lot. And it's a tool to go after those who break it through either fines or other means. Food for thought.
Food for thought.
Okay. We do have a couple of more items to cover. Council reports?
One, I also attended the Association of Municipal Councils today and found out that they know about as much as we do about the item of affordable housing. They had a report on the Affordable Housing Report that was given to the legislature. It basically says, yeah, costs are rising, wages are not. Here's a problem. Couple of interesting facts that they said, there are two hundred and fifty-three affordable rental units for every thousand rental units. So a fifth of them are affordable. The rest are.
Meaning available to those with an income level that's qual- or, or classified.
Classified or that are down in that area, down in that classified income area that they, that can be afforded by anybody. Then they had a report from the Gardner Policy Institute on best practices for affordable housing. And the summation given by one of the other council members in one of the other cities was, it's going to get worse before it gets better and we're running out of land. Yeah, we knew that. But that was the summary of the, the whole presentation, was it, it's gonna get worse. Or, you know, no matter what we do, we can't. Another one, just like you're talking about, it's a catch twenty-two.
It's a, it's a hard problem, for sure.
And we're doing everything we can, but it's not gonna make it any better for a long time. And we can't tell, we, we can't put rental limits, caps on, on rent and that statewide. But it's a statewide, it's a nationwide problem. It's not just here in Sola County.
Well, to some degree, I would redefine that and say it's a market problem. And that is, and I've said this to some people, that why would a homeowner or apartment owner want to charge less than he can make on the property? If the market will pay him double the cost of building it, why wouldn't he charge it? Of course he would.
Right.
Because that's the market. And as long as people keep buying these at the prices they're at, the cost will never go down. The market will drive it.
The market drives it and the land value per acre is influencing the cost of housing too, because that's rising too. It's the same market. You know, if I can sell it for this much, then why should I sell it for this much?
Yeah, the, but the other side of that is that government can influence a little bit, but the market will solve it. And the market is currently solving it. And what do people do that can afford to buy a home or to rent an apartment? They move in with someone. So you have two families in an apartment. Or you, we just talked about a place where they had three bedrooms and three bathrooms. You know, if you can have a bedroom and a bathroom, you, that may be where you live, even though there are other people there and you share a kitchen. People will do that rather than live in a tent or in their car, if they can afford that. If not, they'll live in a tent or their car. Because that portion of the market, now I'm not saying that's the way it should be.
No.
What I'm saying is, people will do what they have to do to get by. They'll move in with family. And we're seeing that now. Across our city, we see a lot of that.
Oh, yeah.
So.
That's why it's gonna get worse before it gets better.
What's worse?
It'll keep going.
Well, prices won't go beyond the price that somebody will pay.
Yeah.
I mean, it's gonna stop at that point because nobody will buy it, but there's lots and lots of land out there.
Well.
If you drive down to St. George, you see a lot of land on the way down there. It's just a matter of loyalty. But I never thought I would see houses west of Utah Lake. Now there's thousands of them.
Oh, it's unbelievable.
And, you know, it's just gonna, the more houses there are, the more available they are, the cheaper they are.
One of the questions that we've not answered is if it's government's responsibility to provide housing. I mean, for certain groups, I would say the answer is definitely yes. Disabled or people who cannot work themselves, especially if it's purple. So there is a role for government to play, but I don't know, I've been going through with the chamber on that. And there are no solutions. And every solution they have, actually, in the long run, makes it worse. It actually makes it worse. It would be better if they didn't do it.
The government starts subsidizing random housing and we're driving up the prices.
In some respects, that's true. That's a factor in it, certainly.
So what are you gonna do about it, Don? Just report it tonight?
Just report. That's why it's under council reports.
Any other council reports? I do have one. The chamber has put together a proposal with help from our police officers, some good individuals there that contributed on the theft of catalytic converters and have put together some language for Senator Maine to take a look at. She and another House of Representatives individual are looking at this issue to see if there are things that need to be put into law. It does have the backing, of course, of our chamber right now, because many people are being very negatively impacted by this. And the market.
Drives it again.
Yeah, and again, thanks to our police department who tracks some of these issues. When you find two individuals who show up every morning with three or four or five catalytic converters to sell them for scrap, you know there's a problem, because they don't own the cars. And we're not the only state having the problem. It's all over. But I report that the chamber is pushing that issue. And I, given that our officers were involved, we felt very comfortable saying West Valley supports that, as well as Taylorsville and West Jordan and Kearns are supporting efforts to try and curb that as many businesses. Some businesses are being hit hard. Catalytic converters can cost thousands of dollars, especially you get on some of these big diesel trucks. Anyway, so I just thought I would mention that, that West Valley is participating in that. In fact, you may have heard some of that in the meetings. So with that then, hearing nothing else, we do have our special RDA meeting that will come up next week. So, Wayne, any comments on it?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. We have one item for the special RDA meeting. That's the renewal of the Opportunity Scholars Program, which would put it into its sixth year, I believe. We've, I think we've been through five already. It's been very successful. You read through the issue paper and, and you note some of the stats. We've got forty-four students that are in this year. We've had fifteen that are scheduled to graduate this year. There's been a very high graduation rate of those participating. I also asked Nicole earlier, because Mayor, the mayor had the question, how many people are not only graduating from the U and participating in this program, but then staying and still living in the city? And she said, it's, it's either all of them or almost all of them. So that's, that's also been highly successful. So it's a worthwhile project and program. It uses, as you know, the Olean Walker State Reserve Funds that are in our RDA. So it's a very specific purpose for that and we recommend renewing it again. So that's what we'll bring into next week.
Great program. It is having a major positive impact on the lives of a few individuals that will have a long-term effect on our city beneficial. Anything else for our study meeting? Ben?
Motion to adjourn.
Without objection, we will stand adjourned. Hearing objection, it's unanimous. Thank you all.